Okay, ladies and gentlemen, six lock. Have we had any apologies Gareth?
No, Shay may be late joining.
I've seen that and then I, I, I don't, I, I thought he would be joining as she said he was, but now John Palmer has family visiting from America at the minute. There's grandchildren and such, so he did say join the meeting, so. Hang on to his. Apologies. Okay, so off we go, I guess. I might, I might kind of hang, hang on to. Some of this until the end, but this is a part B, perhaps, perhaps now is the time to say it really. Nice to see some people have joined us again. Our, our last meeting as a town council. And I've, I've kind of been, been reflecting on it. And went back to the, the kind of start, which is 2017, I believe. So since 2017, we've actually managed to, to achieve quite a lot. Having looked back at, at the stuff that we've done, the St Tinnery Square. Which was, we inherited the project in its final stages. From the previous council. And my memory being an old man's memory, it was with some surprise that I saw it was actually July 2018. When St Tinnery Square eventually opened, so we kind of saw the last, yeah. 12 months of, of, of that project through. I think we've, we've achieved a lot. During, during the course, we've kind of done that job. We commissioned the group. That worked for over three, three years, I think, on the People's Plan. Which was presented to council by the task and finish group that we set up at our last meeting, I think. We've conceived and drawn up, yeah. The Borough Bus Project. That unfortunately, as a council, we stumbled at the last hurdle with that. Because we couldn't get a vehicle. I'm not sure whether you all know actually that that. Borough Bus Project was, was. Picked up again because. The lottery were very keen on it as a project. And it's about to be launched shortly, yeah. So that, that's kind of brilliant news really, as it was, as it was kind of developed and conceived really with us. There's the 2020 Project, which is. Become a little notorious perhaps, but it's great to see that it's nearing its completion now. It's unfortunate that, you know, for various reasons, it's been delayed slightly, so it'll be. It'll be completed just outside the other side of, of, of this council. In, in May time, so. But, you know, a fantastic project. And, you know, talking to the officers in Dumbisher, the biggest investment in Clonkofflin Town Centre for, yeah. A good many years really. And then, of course, there's the Four Highways Project, again, something which was conceived and. Drawn up through the, through the 2020 Project. And is, the funding is there for that, and I believe that's going forward and should be completed by 2024. I think one of the significant things about. This council has been the close work in between our two county councillors and the town council. And I think some of the things that I've just outlined. Kind of demonstrate that, that, that partnership and the strength of it. So, you know, I think we've got a lot to pat ourselves on the, on the back about. Going forward. In terms of being mayor, so yeah, I guess, I guess also, thank you colleagues. You know, there's, there, there aren't few of us standing again. But I know I've made some lifelong friendships during the course of the last five years. Yeah, and I look forward to still getting together people with a, for a good chat over a pint. In terms of being mayor, at the minute, being out and about on the street. Fantastic, really positive feedback about the town square, some amounts about the inconvenience of traffic. And the traffic calming and the red lights and things. But I think people are starting to see. In their, in their eye, what it's going to look like when it's completed. I went to a production by The Young'uns, Little Shop of Horrors, just after our last meeting. A really, really good show, a show that my wife and I have seen two or three times already. And. The Young'uns did it proud and were, were better than some of the professional productions of it we've seen, so. Well done to them. On Friday next, I've got. The last, I've been asked to attend the last meeting of Clonkofflin Rotary. At the Hand, kind of sad moment for the town because I know, since I've been here, yeah. Since I've been here, I've been involved in a lot of projects through Rotary, yeah, and through the people in Rotary. So it, I think town, town will miss them. And that's, that's kind of it really. Can I say at the very beginning of this meeting that it is our last meeting? And there, there are some items that aren't on the agenda, like county council. Stuff because they're, they've gone into their pre-election silence and I'd ask. Members to respect the fact that we're in, in, impaired and. Avoid any electioneering and if there is any, I'll, I'll turn us off, okay? So please could you. Respect the fact that we've got our election coming up shortly and there are some people on the screen who are going to stand for elections, so. Thank you very much for that, so. Are there any statements from the public?
If there is a public question to say something, if they could indicate, put their hands up or unmuted and speak otherwise. Looks unlikely chairman, so we can move on.
Thank you. Receive and consider and accept apologies for absence.
Well, we just covered that, chairman, we've got no formal apologies.
Yeah.
John Palmer may attend if not.
Yeah.
Personal reasons.
Any declarations of interest? Oh, thank you. To authorize the chair to sign. Minutes of the previous meeting of the town council held on the 15th of March. It's a cracked record, anyone like to propose that? Thank you Bob, seconded by Mel. Any objections?
I propose that we do the amended ones that Gareth sent out today.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I kind of, I was kind of working on those, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, is that all right? So any objections to us accepting the amended minutes that's sent out today? Yes, councillor Davis? Yeah, can't hear you Stuart, your mic, your microphone's off Stuart.
I could, yeah, yeah, given that I wasn't allowed to go into, into any of the minutes, so as is usual, I will not be voting for any of these minutes, thank you.
Okay, fine, thank you.
In fact, I will vote against.
Okay, thank you. To receive the minutes of the asset management committee held on the 17th of February. Yeah, proposed by councillor Haddie, seconded by councillor Mile, thank you. Approve the minutes of the Chitterslow Meeting held on the 25th of January 22. Yeah, Melvin, seconded by Robin, thank you. All right, okay, financial reports.
Yes, chairman. It's quite strange actually because as I say, it's the last meeting of this council and a lot of this. This definitely would obviously impact on future council. But it is a requirement once we've received the notification to report it to the next meeting and it came out in March. So we have to report this to the April meeting. Those of you that sort of followed through on these, it's usually a fairly straightforward. Report. But subtly, changes have been made, which are outlined in the report on it. Primarily on the way that they've classified. The councils across Wales, it was purely on the precept in the past. They've now done it based on a combination of precept and electra. Again, cutting a long story short, that means that now we fall into a Group Four council. On, on the size of our electorate and therefore all the. Determinations, sorry chairman, that are applicable to that, that size of council will be the ones we have to consider. I've listed them again with the decision that what we have to do and what we don't have to do. And it's probably easiest if we go through each one and, and just note our, our position, how it's been in the past and what we'd like to do for the future. Determination 43 is the payment of care, care costs. That is not something we can resolve not to do, it is a mandatory payment and if people want to take. Or take avail themselves of, of cover of cost of care, then we have to provide that. We don't budget for that because obviously it's difficult to know what care costs may occur, but we, yeah. But that would be covered from reserves if that came about, that we, we have to start paying. You know, if a member's partner or somebody was taking ill and, you know, to provide care and cover. If you took three to ten to meet him, then that would be legitimate and depending when it happened in the cycle of the. The person, we would have to look at that from reserve. Determination 45 is senior role. Sorry, I missed one, 44, sorry, is the payment of £150 per year towards expenses, costs and expenses. Exceptionals in Group Five where the payment is offered, and obviously where it's Group Four, so we have to make that payment. It's mandatory and it's up to members to decide whether they wish to take the payment or part of the payment. I would urge going forward, those members that are remaining and the new members. I, I really think that this is a payment that should be taken to strengthen things such as your broadband or whatever. And commitments to the IT that is either growing now in the council. And regard it as a, you know, it's a legitimate payment you should take. You, you are elected members to public office and there are costs and responsibilities to go with that, so it's budgeted for and I urge members to take it. And use it appropriately to ensure that, you know, if you, if you can't do it. Hopefully by June, we will be hybrid meetings, but even then if you can't make a meeting, you could access via. Other means and if you've got the appropriate technology to do it, it was possibly covered from this payment. Determination 45. Set up and tabled below, so as a Group Four, this is optional, so you don't, you don't have to pay. An annual amount to a senior, senior role. In the past, we've resolved not to pay that, but we have made. Provisions, you resolve or increased provision under civil, civic costs, civic events, so there is a, a mechanism to pay for the better to attend. Civic events and things, so it's, in the past, the allowance is given and it obviously needs to be spent on going on events on behalf of the council. So this way it is covered by civic events. So I don't know whether you wish to continue with that arrangement or resolve to make a payment in the future. So that's the first one.
I mean, so my, my, my comment would be that I've not taken advantage of either of, well, of the, of the civic fund. Largely, largely because of Covid, I guess, but also because I didn't know. That it was there and what the purpose was, because it wasn't made explicit this time last year, so. All I'd say is, yeah, it's, it's, because there is, there is some expense involved going forward and. I'd just say that if it was the kind of civic fund rather than the set allowance. But that it was made explicit to whoever the next mayor is, that that exists and what it's there for, yes?
Yeah.
Because it wasn't, no, thank you.
Okay, so. The members happy to continue, the current arrangements are not making a payment. Under determination 45.
Yeah. I propose that.
Seconded by councillor Loeb, any objections?
No.
Thank you.
46, again, travel costs, again, these are optional. In the past, we have agreed to pay travel, because I think you should be reimbursed for travel. There has not been many incidents, but like training, if you need to travel for training, although that's gone online recently. But obviously if you do attend training, so again. It's optional and members happy to continue and propose that we do pay and cover the costs of travel if it isn't good.
Proposed by councillor Haddie.
Chairman, I propose that we do pay travel costs.
Yeah, seconded.
It should be available.
Seconded.
Again, overnight stay, very seldom you this, but if at all, since, since I've been here, has anybody stayed. Always away, as it were, but again, I think it's only legitimate that if you do go. On, on the business of the council, it should be covered, so you're happy to continue with our arrangement that we do cover those.
Yeah, I propose that. I'll second it then.
Financial loss, again, we have in the past paid financial loss. When certain members were employed as well and had difficulty getting time off. So again, I think it's reasonable to cover the financial loss. Obviously, you, you won't get this in addition to things such as the attendance allowance. One or the other in that situation. So, but again, I think it's reasonable to cover any losses. If it, if it, if they are incurred by members, you have to resolve that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Proposed by councillor Mile, seconded by councillor Grinley, anybody object? Thank you.
The next one is a new one, we did discuss this at budget setting on the draft document if you know. We can now pay an amount up to £30 for each member's attendance at meetings. Obviously, it's up to. And again, this, this would not be, you couldn't claim this on financial loss for attendance allowance, that's a compensation. And with the attendance allowance, the resolution at the draft stage was not to pursue this and therefore we did not budget. The potential that this could have, because it would be potentially. £330 a meeting times. Twelve meetings plus committees, so the resolution at a draft planning, at draft budget stage was not to proceed to this. And it is again optional, so if the members.
Councillor Haddie.
Where, where you have councils like district or. County councils, where it becomes like a full-time job. And you can't really do it on, on a part-time basis, then such payments really do become important. But in our case, I would disagree and I would suggest that it would be inappropriate for us to pay in terms of that.
Yeah, I agree with that and I'd second that if that was a proposal.
Yeah.
Right, anybody object to that? Okay, thank you.
The next determination is an additional payment to a maximum of three senior posts. Clearly. We're not going to pay the mayor. An allowance, so it's a bit inappropriate if then we're not going to the. In the past, we've resolved not to pay this extra payment for special responsibilities. But again, it is optional, but in the past, we've not supported that, chairman.
Councillor Haddie.
Sorry, sorry to keep putting in on this one, the, the, whilst what we're discussing at the moment is actually a personal payment. One of the problems associated with not paying anything in, in the way that we used to, but make it a mayor's allowance. Is that it then means that your mayor is stymied in effect. In his civic duties, because he, he, there's no money to, to, to do anything. Particularly towards the end of their. Terms or if they have any pool on their charitable distribution. So I know it's not quite the same because this is, I think we ought to make some provision for, for a fund for the mayor. Because without it, there is no one in the pot for them to deal with.
Well, as, as I said earlier, the civic, civic cost centre does have that. That, that, that replaces the allowance, I think it's. It definitely more than the allowance would have been. And because, because primarily the allowance wasn't for payment of events, you know, attendance.
No, no, I know that.
It was a payment to them and some people used to buy new suits and things like that for the bus. So the intention is that it's a payment to, to, to the individual who's in, in that position.
A way of income.
Yeah, so as I said, we've resolved not on the lay at mayor, this is deputy mayor or a deputy chair, so. And, you know, there's, there's more provision in our civic cost centre than there was for the mayor. In the past, we paid, so it, as councillor Shenley said, it's perhaps a, it's a message to whoever's the new mayor to. Be aware that they can attend as many as they can and want to and, and cover costs on that fund. After getting things invoiced rather than paying direct and claiming it against your landlord. And it's a happy option. To continue the current process, not paying those additions.
I, I would propose that we, I would propose that we don't pay them as, and stick to what we do at the moment.
Yeah, that's the proposal that we stick with the cost centre rather than having it as an allowance. A proposal by councillor Mile, anybody like to second that? Thank you councillor Grinley, any objections? Thank you very much.
And just to be aware that sitting members, as it is, you are entitled to a pro rata payment if you want to claim it. From the 1st of April to the 8th of May, because this comes in. On the 8th of May. And then new members are entitled to a proportional payment after the 8th of May.
Just a matter of, of point of order there, is, members don't have to claim it. It's theirs as a right, they have to indicate they don't wish to.
Don't wish to claim it, so if you don't, let me know. Well, you have to let me know if you're going to claim it because I need your bank and national insurance number because it's a PA, like at the moment. Tax deductible, so. By default, I have to know you want to claim it because I've got to put it through the payroll, so you've got to give me that information. If I don't receive that information, then you can pay it to the local risk. That, that's the position, so whilst I can't ask you to tell me whether you want it or not, I have to get your details to be able to pay you. So it's a bit of a catch 22. But, you know, that's for members to email me if they. declined payment or that period, but that's fine.
Councillor Mile.
I was just going to suggest that anyone who does want to claim it, email Gareth by tomorrow to give him a chance.
Yeah.
And then obviously we have to publish all this, so if you do make claims and by the end of the financial year, there's a reporting mechanism to the IRP. And it's posted on our website, who have seen payments under the various headings through the financial year. So that really, as we've gone through making the amendments and agreements as we've gone through, then that report, that's. It's fine.
Okay, thank you.
The next one was something really that I, you might be hit by surprise, but I, I don't know why I was so surprised. In that HSBC said it was on a charge account and I noticed they have charged our. Mayor's charity account, a fee and therefore the amount of money was depleted quickly. But I've confirmed with them that there is no, you know, even though it says charity, it will incur a cost at the state of HSBC. And then I see the report, I mean, just to keep it alive, we have to raise £92 a year. Of money which really will be given for charitable purposes, which we're giving to HSBC. So my suggestion is that we, we close the accounts as soon as possible. And seek another account for the new. Terminal office for the new mayor that doesn't incur any charges, I mean, it could, could even be put into a building society deposit account and could be drawn out at the end of the year. So it's just a mechanism really not to basically take money off people on the charitable basis to give it to HSBC. The recommendation there is that we, we close the accounts as soon as possible.
Anybody like to propose that? Councillor Haddie, seconded by councillor Grinley, thank you, any objections to that?
No, there was just one query I would raise. Quoted £96 a, a year, I understand it's £5 a month that HSBC are charging.
It's £8, I think.
Sorry?
It's £8.
£8?
Yeah.
Because I've got, I've got accounts, charity accounts based on. Real charities. And they're only charging £5, so.
Eight, they've been taken out, so I'm not quite sure why.
They've robbed us.
I think, I think as, if I'm right, Gareth, Gareth, Gareth indicated that HSBC. In spite of it being called charity and not looking upon it as a charitable account, because it's not an official charity, I guess.
Well, it doesn't matter if you, if you are a charity, you're getting charged HSBC, so.
Yeah, they're still charging.
You know, it's, 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 as I say, we could get a deposit account in the, in the building societies to hold the money. Just transfer it to us at the end of the year and the council will pay out, you know.
Do the post office still do accounts?
The members are happy with the recommendation.
That, that, well, we've, we've had it, had it proposed by councillor Mile and seconded by councillor Grinley. Any objections, anybody? Now, okay, thank you.
Authorized payments, I've sent out the revised schedule, something in last week, due to my absence on the. A lot of them were standing orders or direct evits, but quite significant ones, so I'd important you see them. One is ACS Technology, £4,200, that's a town hall online project, but we will get that reimbursed for substantial amount of that. Because we've got grant in aid to come from Dumbisher, but just to point out that it's gone out. And then we had our premises licence has been deducted from our account via. Direct debit by county council and simply our trade waste account. Trade waste collections up to £49 of the last quarter, so they, they have been added into the. Into the schedule, chairman. I don't know, unless members have any other questions on what's sent out, it's fairly straightforward.
Anybody got any queries, councillor Haddie?
Sorry about this, I'm hugging it a bit tonight, the ACS job, which they were. Doing recently, is that now complete and operational?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's some work doing, they want to liaise with technical guys to, to what kind of system I think they're lighting lots. But there is wifi up there from the day hall, but I think we need to put out a booster and a way of plugging into that, so that's one item we've.
So we're in a position to move to hybrid meetings that.
Oh, no, that, now, now, that, that's just the network thing, we're now got the next contractors. Starting to get the kit. And that's on order, but it's unlikely because everybody's buying it at the moment. So it's about a six to eight weekly time, so we're, I don't think we'll get it in by May unfortunately, but hopefully our first hybrid meeting will be June. So that's to follow.
Thank you. Anybody like to propose we accept that?
I'll go, go on.
Hello, seconded by councillor Haddie, thank you. Additional statements?
Bank reconciliation, I've just sent it over to councillor Mile. And again, I was off last weekend, the statements stuff come to the. Weren't online to be able to send the copy, but if we could approve it subject to councillor Mile endorsing. They were just sort of out in the morning with him and they do reconcile and, you know. But unfortunately we've had a blip in our, in our process, but if you can acknowledge the reconciliation and then. Take that forward, chairman.
I'll propose that we do that.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Grinley, yeah. Thank you. Seconded by councillor Greenley. Yeah. Any objections? Thank you.
The financial statements, again, they actually have shown it as an acquisition. And it does reflect really the year end. As you can see, we haven't come out too badly by cautious spend. And our income is held at largely because we've recovered lost rents from last year. The VAT now has got to be claimed. That's the, I remember a bit, we fuddled with the twelve thousand on income and was showing, well, that's recharge of that. I've waited to the very end because obviously we had the roof that was coming. So a claim will go in now until the thirty first of March with the VAT. But as you can see, you know, we haven't got ourselves into a precarious position. In fact, we're probably in a position where the bulk of the roof work could be covered from our revenue account this year. We won't have to dip that much into reserves as we thought. There's still some outstanding works on the roof, cherry picker jobs that they can get to, if you didn't require the scaffolding, so that could progress. But because of the highway works, there's been some limited access on the pavement. Because, you know, we don't have enough people stopping the traffic. We don't have a cherry picker alongside the traffic lights in Port Mayo. So when we can get that to it, a bit of coordination on that, we will sort that out. So, yeah, so, you know, I'm quite pleased that we've managed the accounts, I think, quite well this year, given the pressures we were under in continuation, a loss of income upstairs in the town hall on highers. And as members know, there are still some outstanding debts, but we are addressing those for the asset management committee. And those who haven't forgotten, they are being pursued. So hopefully that will help us going forward. We've also had some, what I would call a windfall, British Gas had overcharged some three and a half thousand pounds on gas by doing estimated bills throughout the whole of lockdown when we go to the shop. So that's come back in. So there are things like that. And as you recall, we couldn't pay full business rates for the most of this year because of our compensation from last year and that. And so, yeah, we're in a position now, obviously, to finalise the accounts and coming forward. I've started the internal audit process. And although we haven't had the external audit back yet, I'll be speaking to the auditors today. That is nearly completed as well. So hopefully, the audit position will be clearer with a new council going forward. The members are happy with the announcement, chairman, to note the position.
Anybody like to propose? Councillor Mile, councillor Keddie. Yes, seconded. Any objections? Thank you. Town Clerk's report?
Yeah, the Covid report, chairman, it's been updated based on the changing circumstances, based on the scenarios being offered by the Welsh Government in the report, they call from transition from pandemic to endemic. It's still based on risk assessment, but it's the risk assessment isn't actually Covid specific, but it's now covered by the Health and Safety Executive and obviously the local.
Can I, before you go any further, Gareth, can I ask other what the implications with regards to this document are with the announcement that the Welsh Government made last week, I think it was Thursday, where they lifted all restrictions on employers, the only restriction, Covid restriction at all that's still in place, is the need for people to wear a mask in hospital? That's my understanding.
This is, this is still the ongoing documentation. This is the one where they've lifted all Covid restrictions, but we still have a duty of care as employees, employers, under the new Covid health and safety, described in our camera report in the report. It's now passed back in essence to what it was before, to the, sorry, I felt I'm in the end of the report, turning it off my phone. So.
So at what point, Gareth, sorry, at what point would we just return to a situation where we just opened like we did pre pandemic? Because there is always, I'm guessing, if you're just looking at it, the people infected with respiratory infections introducing viruses into the building, that will be true forever. So does that mean that that statement will remain in place forever?
Yeah, this is the new terminology now. It's all respiratory infections. And, you know, if you look at the documentation, it identifies these. There's still a requirement under law, health and safety law, to undertake risk assessments. And that's what the document says. It's moved.
So every, every organisation, every organisation that exists still, in spite of the pandemic moving to endemic, and all of the restrictions with regards to people in buildings, you know, stuff like cinemas, all of that, in spite of all of that, and banks and all the other organisations, we are forever now going to be in a situation whereby this applies as a risk or a very high risk with the restrictions on the side. Is that, that's kind of my understanding of where we're heading for with this document? Because there is always going to be.
Exactly.
Viruses.
Exactly. And there always was before with other issues of health and safety covered by health and safety legislation. So what this is, is that it says at the bottom, the legislation now is covered by the Health and Safety Executive guidance, continuing to reduce the risk of Covid entrants in the workplace and ensure staff welfare. So it's reverted back. There was always a duty of care on employers to undertake health and safety risk assessments for staff. So a cinema can still make a risk assessment for its. So this is a risk assessment on the staff. The premises are open. Individual organisations of book will have to make their own risk assessments of how they're going to operate.
But no member of, no member of the public will, according to this, ever be able to gain access to the Town Hall in spite of all of the stuff we bought, screens, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that at all. It doesn't say that at all. All it says is if somebody is infected with a respiratory disease.
It does talk about restricted access. Yeah.
I mean, there is no restricted access. This is for staff mainly. And that's a responsibility you have as employers to ensure that staff are safe. And the document, the hire said these people infected with the infections arrived into the building, users to undertake their own risk assessment. So nothing to do with us now. The onus is on the hire to make sure they're happy that they're complying with the necessary risk assessments, which they've always had to be.
Yeah. Well, as this, as this, I mean, I would say that I'm guessing there will be further discussion, but as this is an employee, employer's document and not an employee's document, I would suggest that this document is taken forward to the new sort of asset management group who deal with this kind of thing for their consideration and further discussion.
You've got two hands up.
Sorry, go for it. Councillor Haddie?
Oh, right. Well, as far as I can see, we're confusing that today. The risk assessments on buildings were removed by the Welsh Assembly Government as of the eighteenth of April. And as, but what we're, the clerk is discussing is requirements under the Health and Safety Work Act to reject employees. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
There's, it doesn't affect people who are coming in from dancing classes or operatic things or a bun fight in the back. The hire, we would have to assess the hall if it was a, if it was a council function, only, but only in terms of any employees that we may have.
Correct. This is purely to comply. You had one before because you had to undertake a risk assessment as an employer for the staff in the building. So it's just going back and reflecting on some of the comments of, you know, the.
In the document, Gareth, with all due respect, and I might belaboring it, what it says here is Town Clerk's report, and it says, Town Council long term Covid transition from pandemic to endemic.
Yeah.
And that's, that's not this document.
Can I make a proposal? Because the point on the employer considerations, that it seems to cross over with HR. So could we suggest that this, that those elements of this report are taken to the HR committee for consideration and confirmation against our current HR policies? And then brought back to the council after that assessment?
I must say, I don't, I think, all it needs to do is make it plain in this, it relates to employees and Health and Safety Work Act. It doesn't, that's where the confusion is. Nowhere else.
I would just, where it makes today, there's been quite extensive discussions in the HR committee, as you'll know from minutes, around the working from home policy. And so where there's crossover, it's perhaps worth consideration by the HR committee to make sure there's no conflict with what's been discussed and confirmed there. But it doesn't conflict with this document.
The recommendation is specific about staff, and it does say that. You need the recommendation. The recommendation is that the town council got this assessment. The Welsh Government has the executive guidance in respect of town council offices and staff. It doesn't mention hall, it doesn't mention anywhere.
I mean, so would it, would it help if it were further discussed? I'm not, I'm not arguing, I think I've got a better understanding of it, though it is not what was described on the agenda. That if, if, it does need discussing by HR, I think, because if we have a member of staff who is vulnerable, as in the third one, with an increased risk of infection, for example, that would be, that would need to be considered by the HR on an individual basis. So that just reasonable adjustment to their working arrangement could be made in order to meet their needs. Because this is a kind of a blanket thing for, yeah, whereas each, you know, individual, I mean, over the last 12 months, we've revisited this a couple of times, haven't we? That reasonable adjustments need to be made because we do have a duty of care, but it needs to be done with members of staff on an individual basis, not as an element of a kind of a blanket document.
Well, it does actually say that as well. It says that you should undertake further individual risk assessment with staff to have considered personal risk factors from respiratory infections. So those risk assessments underneath these, personal risk assessments will then be done. And if there are issues of human resource needs to be addressed, they will then be brought to the department.
Okay, that's, that's great, Gareth. Yeah, I'm happy with that. But what I would like you to do, please, is to make that explicit within the measures to be taken. So that what's indicated is that it's responsibility of the employers to reduce and minimise risks. Yeah. And so we need to be involved in the process.
Which way do we looking at, by the way, folks?
I was looking, as an example, I'm guessing it might be in the places in the document. Identify vulnerable individuals and complete risk assessments with staff to help consider. Right, just that that is the responsibility of the HR committee. And it just means, as we've said in the past, over a couple of meetings, it needs to be made explicit within documents. Because if it's not made explicit, yeah, when we refer to the documents a month down the line, yeah, it's not made explicit. So we're told we can't do it because it's not explicit within the document. So I'm just, the responsibility which, which, you know, whether it's HR or whatever, whether it's the Chair of HR, it needs to be explicit within this document that that person is responsible for determining the third column, if appropriate.
Which page are you looking at?
I'm looking at the first page, and the one that's jumped out is the third page, the third one down. Members of staff who are vulnerable.
I see.
Infection very high.
Page eighteen.
Yeah. Page eighteen, sorry, is it the page?
Page eighteen, yeah.
Yeah. So identify vulnerable individuals.
I know which one you're talking about.
I just think we need to make it explicit whose responsibility it is to do that. Yeah. Because we do, we do.
Yes, I'm a, I'd like, I also think if you look at page eighteen, so I appreciate the clarification on the, that the risk assessment should be made by the employer and with, working with the employee. Then page twenty, it goes further and almost anticipates the outcome of that risk assessment and talks about how, you know, I don't have the exact words in between, but talks about vulnerable staff to work from home or reduce time in the office should not be required or placed under pressure to work, to return to the workplace, and appointments, visits by appointment. To me, that, those last three anticipate the outcomes of the risk assessment.
Yeah.
Whereas if you do the risk assessment, there might be different accommodations. So I would, I would suggest removing them or reviewing them with the HR committee to make sure there's no clash there.
All I'm saying is that is the guidance from HR, and it is guidance. And that is the suggested mitigating factors that you can address to assist with the circumstances. And as it stands, we haven't got those individual risk assessments. They're not being done. You know, they'll have to be done constantly going forward.
Well, my proposal is that the, that this, that this document is presented to the HR committee of the next council at its first meeting, meeting, yeah, as a discussion document.
I'll second that.
I really think you need to adopt it as a town council. Ultimately, the town council's responsibility. If you want the HR committee to look at it in more detail about what elements they need to pursue, then fair enough.
That's what I'm suggesting, Gareth. Yeah. I'm not suggesting for a second that they make a decision on behalf of the whole council, but that they reflect on it and bring a proposal to the full council for their consideration.
Well, I think we should adopt, firstly, think that you should be adopting this risk assessment to move forward. And individual elements, obviously, you know, ultimately, a committee with HR committee is a committee of the council. So, you know, if the town council takes full responsibility as a corporate entity for human resource.
But if we propose, if we propose this, if we propose this document tonight, and this document is in place for six months, and there are things within the document that have been questioned, what I'm suggesting is that this document goes to the HR, next HR committee as a document for them to discuss, modify, and put forward a modified version to the full council of the next council.
And I'll second that again.
That's been seconded. So anybody object to that? Okay, thank you.
Okay. In addition, on page sixteen, there was a couple of things that I was going to query on B, which has already been answered. But D, it says authorises the purchase of the new counter and screen to achieve a safer working environment for staff and visitors. I thought we'd already purchased and it's still there.
Well, yes. This is just saying, if you look further down, it says the risk assessment provides for return of pre pandemic operations whilst in staff welfare. And it reflects on the fact that we've done Covid secure measures in the office of early. So it says in four point two, the introduction of four principal planning side of Covid central urgent reports to the previous decision made by the council, but provides an opportunity to review the risk assessment in October, not only in the light of the change in threat levels, but also because alterations have been made to the office environment as outlined in the revised procedure. A pender.
So why does four, why does four one D authorise the purchase of a new counter and screens?
Because that was considered at the meeting held on the ninth of October.
I know, and it's already passed. So why is it appearing again?
Just to show that that was when the original, last season. Just to show that that was when the original, the last original recommendations of the previous risk assessment and this new risk assessment in the light of that amended because those actions have been undertaken at risk assessment.
Gentlemen, Stuart, were you waving your hand about?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Right, so Gareth, we've had, we've had a proposal, we've had it. Proposed, seconded and voted upon, yeah?
Yep.
Plone applications?
Hello. Yeah, so O three, twenty twenty two, oh, one seven three and one seven four, I'll treat them both together because it's a major project, project and very, very complex. There's like fifty seven documents online. And from the plan submitted, it appears to be only cosmetic changes, which I consider for the better. So there's no actual size difference or major looking differences. And I think that we should just do not object and leave the rest to the experts, who will no doubt look into this with every fine little tooth, tooth comb they can.
Anybody got anything that lets us say add? Council mile, can't hear you.
I'll second that.
Yeah, seconded. Any objections? Okay, thank you.
Zero one seven six, three camera in place. This is for an extension which just replaces an existing conservatory. So I don't see any reason to to object to that. It doesn't, again, doesn't affect anybody's light or anything like that. It's virtually out of sight.
Right, seconded. Any objections now? Yeah.
Two six one, Tinephonon. Right. It's, the shed's already been built behind the house, but it's very difficult to see because it's behind the property. When you look from like the Aldi car park, for instance, you can't see it. You can't see from the road. And when you go the road above it, you look down, you have to jump up to see it. So it's out of sight for everybody.
No objection, any objections or comments? Move. Thank you.
Two six seven. Basically, at Aidanhurst, they're splitting the garden or their garden, they're getting rid of half their property in garden for outline planning for a house. And obviously, you know, Abbey Road is right by the the Estevard entrance. So it's in a row of houses that are already there. It's in fitting with everything else that's there. So again, I don't see any reason for objection.
Just just a point, Sheriff A. If I remember rightly, and things may have changed, but I remember running off and telling me that the green belt or something was round about Aidanhurst there. Has councillor Hedy, Hady checked whether it is in the development or whether it is still outside?
I've no idea on that one, sorry.
Oh, okay. It was just a thought that popped into my head then, I thought.
Yeah, Aidan, Aidan, as I, as I recall, Aidanhurst side of the road is within the development, it's the opposite side of the road which isn't.
No, there was a, no, councillor, you're wrong there. There was something, there was something about the boundary was there. Might have changed all over the Aldi piece in position, just just a note of caution for you all, that's all.
Surely, surely if it's if it's in that area, then the council will pick up on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who will?
There are, there are basically any objections that that we can refer to. So, yeah, propose we accept it?
I'll abstain on that one, if you don't mind, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Craig Adon, two oh two seven five. That's as oh one seven six, it's for an extension to replace an existing conservatory and bit of decking there. So again, I can't see why we can object to that.
Propose.
Objections.
Check.
And zero three one seven. This was debated a couple of times at council. This time, they've had the planning permission for the parking area, which is like a funny shape. They want to take that angle out, so they put adding a triangle to make it more square, which will ease turning of vehicles in the parking area.
Propose.
So I think it's about three metres to nothing as a triangle.
Anybody, any objection? Right, thank you.
And that's it, thank you.
Let's see this one, sorry. On the supplement.
Supplementary one, wasn't there?
Okay. Oh, sorry, yes, I forgot about, I didn't, yeah, that came through after I'd sent this out. Yeah, that's Pedigree Plan. Again, there appears, I haven't, I didn't look at the other plans because I only did it like at half past five this afternoon. But it appears to me, because we know the people who own the house, that nothing much has changed on it, just a little bit of a, like a coal bunker near the kitchen door. I think it's more cosmetic changes rather than any major changes on that one.
I think it's bats and it's it's a bat something, isn't it? Hang on a minute.
They've submitted, they've submitted new plans.
Yeah. It's for a bat survey or something, I think. Sorry, which one, which one are we talking about? Kerry Galan.
Three Kerry Galan, yeah.
Three fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
Was it a bat thing?
Yes, it's to allow the amendment to sign a deterrent condition four, five, six and seven, including provision for roosting bats and nesting birds and lighting speed. Construction environmental management and.
Okay, okay, so with, so, yeah, within that, the only documents that have been submitted are sections, elevations and a floor plan. There's nothing else being submitted.
Yeah.
So we can't read a comment on that.
Yeah, any objections, not any objections we can make, no? Anybody got any comments? Anybody object? Thank you.
I'll certainly accept.
And that's.
Sure.
That's it, thank you.
There's a nine A which has snuck in. We have now got planning correspondence, which I sent out. I'd give you an update on the local development plan, sorry. In essence, COVID has backed this and they've had to revise their timetable. They're now producing a revised version and we've consulted the problem with the communities and then agreed by the House, the Welsh Government. But it's just unlikely that this position cannot be achieved before the end of next year. So it's, and it's just a note for delay on the process journey.
Okay, brilliant. And then we've got certificates of decision, one Abba, refuse, one Bodleyn Miller's grant. And I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce it, yeah? Shay? Yeah, Villa Street Grant. Right, okay, thank you. Right. Finally, I think, for the part A. Receive updates from members with regards to, or the members representing the council outside bodies. Final reports, if anybody's got one. A one B champion, yeah, Robin?
Yeah, I got nothing.
Anybody got us to say now? Okay. Dembeshia Tourism Destination Partnership.
That would be councillor Palmer, if you.
Yeah. Friends of Penguin. Yeah, Friends of Penguin, I'm guessing I'm the chair, so I can report that we have got the planning permission for the new buildings and the new buildings are on order. And the turnaround is weeks, not months, because it's only what they, what they need is to get services in there and then plant the buildings on top of the services. So that should be fairly straightforward. And we're currently having meetings and discussions to discuss what we might do with the building and how we might generate through the years to the building some revenue expenditure going forward, so that, you know, we're going on into the future, we can perhaps employ somebody to, yeah, manage the building and manage the activities. So, yeah, all seems very smiley at the minute. They're really, really great meetings, they're very positive. John Matthews Trust.
Yeah, we had a very successful AGM and it was faced, everybody face to face, which made it even nicer. This year, we made fifteen awards. The total going out was ten thousand eight hundred and sixty pounds. There were a smaller number of applications, but we think it was down to COVID. Now that seems to be getting put onto a back burner, but we're expecting more people to start applying. We've had a new independent member onto our trust board and he's a local person, Jamie Roberts, who is based up at Dennis Brands. So that's good that we have a person who's having constant contact with students. And we do hope that will lead to more students from this area actually applying. And it's really been, you know, lovely working with them. And we're hoping to take it forward and be even more successful in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We're lost in twenty twenty. Robin?
Hi there, sorry, mute button wasn't working. Yeah, I've, I do have an update. I've got some, a couple of slides to share, just have a visual. Gareth said I'd like to try and share my screen. Okay. So just really, a quick note to finish up on as I step down and other members step down from the town council. The twenty twenty, as I heard you saying earlier, is obviously, you know, been going on quite a while, twenty seventeen and not not entirely without controversy, but but getting towards conclusion. And with that, the the twenty twenty group as it stands has made a decision to step down. And so that the, as the project is largely is now in the hands of Dembeshia. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to do a quick review and a final update, so members are clear where where we've taken it to and what the next steps are. So in terms of achievements, not to repeat what you said earlier, Shen, but the pedestrian safety on Castle Street has much improved with the wider pavements and the installation of the crossing points imminent. And the opportunities for businesses have been expanded with, you've seen a growth of A boards, which have been in demand for for many years and and that, you know, providing an opportunity there and more to come. The free one hour parking in Market Street Car Park provided the improved active travel route along Chapel Street, along Church Street and Bridge Street. The addition of a tree on Castle Street, not the eight we'd planned for, but progress anyway. And then a plan underway as the car parks are looked at, that trees would be included in that. And a commitment from DCC to a unique solution for Clangotham Parking, so that instead of being required to meet the same standards for parking across Dembeshia, that that we can develop our own tailored solution for the particular challenges that we have here. And then an early design for the Four Great Highways project, which was able to line us up for, as a leveling up funding funded project. So that's, that's what we've delivered. A few notes on parking and then the Four Great Highways. So the parking work that we've done identified the six user groups. And some of you will have read the the full report. But really, I guess the the key learning here is that there is no simple solution such as just one, providing one particular solution, because it will always have impact on on the other user groups. So the, if you haven't had a chance to read the the version six point six of the of the document, I do, I do urge you to at least look at the the way it's set out in terms of the benefits and compromises of each of the suggestions made, where we've tried to balance that between between different, the different user groups. So this is, has been provided to to Dembeshia County Council for their consideration. And as they move forward, they will be using it.
Yeah, if I may.
Provide further consultation.
All right, I'm Robin.
Point of order, please, Chair. We were warned earlier on about stuff like this going forward. And can I, can I finish by point of order, please, Chair? What we have to realise is that that councillor Lovelock is talking about decisions that are going to be made in the future. So I think we've got the general idea, the decisions will be made by the next councils. And we will have to wait for the result of the elections to see which one. So I do not think that this is the right point in time that we should be discussing this.
Stuart, Stuart, with all, with all due respect, with all due respect, councillor Lovelock, none of the members of twenty twenty are standing for the next council. All we, all we are doing is describing where the points that we have reached in the work that we've been doing over five years. There's nothing political about it. I'm sorry, Stuart, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, carry on, thank you, thank you, Chair. So to.
Councillor Davies, can you please stop talking?
Because you are in the wrong chair, sorry.
Sorry.
So to.
Please stop talking.
Finish the update.
Not not decisions that have been made.
Gareth, you can use Councillor Davies, please, thank you.
Thank you. And so just to flag up in particular that the proposed, the proposals would increase capacity within the town, as you can see here, by around twelve percent. So that's, that would be an opportunity for the town without needing to build new car parks. So just to really highlight that that there will be further research, as as councillor Davies has noted, there'll be need to be further research into this and then further consultation. On the Four Great Highways, this is the Heritage Railway, Clangotham Canal, the Thomas Thomas Telford's London Hollyhead Road and the River Dean, Four Great Highways. And the proposals that, the draft plans that were put together with with input from the
community, including a viewing platform at the end of the the bridge there. So fairly unexpectedly, but the the site got integrated into the only leveling up funding project for North Wales. And so we'll be moving ahead along with work that's going into Wenfroud and other work by the AOV, so that will be taken forward as part of that. And so just as a final note, really, that I just want to end on a, on a really positive note, but this is really, it has been a very difficult and complex project to to work on. Obviously, we are aware, we live in a tight valley, that we are limited by space. And, you know, one of the exciting things was the number of ideas that we heard as we consulted on the the project. Everyone we spoke to had an opinion and we tried our best to allow people to voice those opinions so that they could be looked at alongside each other and assessed by by traffic experts. And so we, while we recognise that there will always be room for improvement with these kind of consultation processes, we we are really encouraged with Clangotham twenty twenty that where we started and people said it was impossible, nothing would change, we wouldn't get the funding by persistence and and a lot of hard work with the consultations. We're really encouraged that the funding has been secured and we really are also encouraged that we see more and more projects starting up and people talking to each other about the ideas that they have and looking for funding. And so we hope that that continues and that this can be an inspiration, that even when things are difficult, even when problems are, problems are complex, that by talking about them and talking about them in a respectful manner that listens to to different opinions and takes those opinions into account, that the positive change can come out of that. And I guess just from my own side, it's been a pleasure working with the Clangotham twenty twenty group and with you as a council to deliver this with the town. And although I'm stepping down, if any of the data that's been gathered through the project can be of help to future councils, then of course we're available. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you. For Clangotham and Glen Tree and Welfare Charities. I think we've had a meeting, have we? Councillor Greenley? You're muted. Muted.
I'm sorry, I was unable to attend the last meeting.
Yeah, I, I was unable as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm guessing that two new appointments will be made from the next council, will they, Gareth?
Yes, if, obviously, we check with the respect of organisation, is who wants us to, yeah.
Yeah. Clangotham Christmas Festival. We're starting, we're starting to talk about it. Starting. it. And we're starting to talk about it, starting to organise it, but are in desperate need of volunteers really. I'm guessing the same, there's a lot of organisations in Clangotham. A lot of our membership has, has, has kind of fallen by the wayside, one by another in the last two years of Covid. So it's, it's a thing that's in process. Silver Band?
Yeah, we're, we're moving onwards, gathering points about this, things are happening. It should be a difficult start, but we're getting there.
Yeah, good. Youth Trust. So One Voice Wales, councillor Baker, I think, isn't it?
Baker, yeah.
It is, yeah. Boston Free Clangotham? No. Callagrenant?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you.
And then Chair, supplementary agenda item, neglected the fact that we've got the representative on the Parks Project, so councillor Palmer sent enough written up there on it.
Yeah. I just, I just like, like to note the report, but thank Jess Evans for all of our hard work on behalf of, yeah, the people in Clangotham. Yeah, councillor Keddie?
Now, on this report, I believe that they're struggling for funding. Is there anything that the town council could possibly do to give them some funding towards it? Because it's part, what they, they have to match fund 20% of the project. And they're relying on one source that isn't an eligible source for them, unfortunately.
I'm guessing it would need to be a request that would go forward to the new council, Paul, yeah?
Yep. Sorry, Chair, I think there's a deadline by next Wednesday though, so.
Oh.
I mean, it is technically, yes, but councillor Keddie will be on the next council and he has raised the matter.
Councillor Keddie, what's, which is the funding that they're trying to match against? The, is that the?
I think, I think there's an issue possibly of double funding. There's some of the money that the county were relying on is already Welsh Government funded. So that has to be excluded. And, I mean, Jess did speak to it with, you know, I said, I, it's not my position to think it's all that councillor Keddie has. I mean, obviously, we do have the £4,000 that you need, which could be allocated to a community project. And, you know, in the past, we, we used it to spend recreation ground works in entirety. You know, it, it is in the budget this year. You are still a legitimate council to make a decision how you spend your budget.
Is that the shortfall Gareth? Is the Gareth, how much is the shortfall that they're looking at?
That, that, that four would then, I'm not very good at maths, but that four would, would have a multiplier, because you get 20, 80. So four eight, four eight, that would get 32 back into the project.
Yeah.
It's not just four, it becomes 32.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I think there, you know, anything to close the gap, then probably would do.
Times, sorry councillor Haddie?
Is this a pledge or is this an actual funding? If, if the, if the project folds, that the 4,000 is, is gone, or is it 4,000 in the pocket on the basis that they can raise the rest of it? And if, if that fails, then we get the 4,000 pounds back?
Again, my, my understanding is all very new, obviously, but my understanding is that without, this pledge would possibly allow them to do the bulk and say perhaps things like the crazy goal would have to be looked at in the future. So an element would have to be taken out. If, even if we were to give the 4,000, an element would have to be taken out. But with the 4,000, there's more chance going forward. But it's a commitment that we would have to spend, you know, once we make the decision, it would happen. It's not potentially, you know, an offer subject to something else. It would be a.
No, no, that's not what I mean. It's a, it's a pledge of finance that we actually part with, or is it that we're committed to if, if the project goes ahead?
It's a pledge to finance and then if it goes ahead, obviously.
If it goes ahead, yeah.
So we, yeah, councillor Greenley?
I was going to say, this is going to be a project that's going to benefit so many people in the town. It's a thing that's been needing done for a long time. And I would like to see the council as one of our last acts actually supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Davies?
I, I, just a note of caution with councillor Keddie bringing this forward, he's standing for county council. And if he seemed to gain votes for being a good, a good lad and getting some money for this, it could be construed as not the right thing to do. Just be very careful about this. And in fact, perhaps it would be better that another supporter would be.
I think, yeah. Am I right Gareth, that, am I right that Jess Evans has asked you this? Yeah? Has talked to you about this?
Jess Evans has made me aware that a proposition might be coming forward. Obviously, I can't proposeions to the council. It has to come via a report. And councillor Palmer was to speak to this report. But I think councillor Palmer may have talked to councillor Keddie to.
So, so, to, yeah, so avoid any potential conflict of interest. I'm quite happy to propose that we move forward and £4,000 to support this project so that it can go ahead. Anybody like to second that?
I would have to second that. And I suggest councillor Keddie refrain from voting on it.
No.
Yeah. And same for me, please, Chair. I, I must refrain, although I support this project full part of me.
Yeah, okay, right. So with, with the, with the abstentions of councillor Davies and councillor Keddie, yeah, we're all in favour, I guess, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, just pretty much. Close the side, everyone. Yes, thank you.
All right. So now, now we move into part B.
One, one moment, Chair, please, before we go into part B. Can I, can I ask the question? This is very, very important and it's not going to be difficult or anything. I do not see anything within this next report that is controversial, that the public shouldn't see. And I do not think that we should be going into part B. I don't, I also don't think that, that we should be making decisions that will be binding the next council. And also I would point out, there's been out of council discussion by members by email on this subject. And I move that we leave this for the next council.
Oh, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, Stuart, what we'll do is as it's a part B item, we'll move into part B. And if you would like to make that proposal and the rest of the group accept it, we can move forward on it.
No, I, I'm against going into part B totally, Chair. So I have nothing to do with this.
So the proposal is that we do not hold this as a part B item. Would anybody like to second that? I'm sorry, Stuart, thank you. If we can now move into part B, please, Gareth, thank you.